All right, welcome back. Thank you. We're going to move to item 6.5, 10:15 a.m., a presentation on Lake County Behavioral Health Services, Mental Health Services, and annual update for fiscal year 2425, and approval of modifications to the three-year plan spanning 2324, 2425, and 2526. And we have our behavioral team back up.
Well, hello again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board. And we have, I believe, Mr. Abbott has a request to share screen for a presentation that we have. I apologize that that did not make it the presentation itself on the agenda. However, the full plan is on the agenda. So would it be possible for, I think he's-
So we are moving forward with this item today?
This is 6.5, a presentation of the Mental Health Services Act?
Yes, I just have a sticky that says otherwise. I just was prepared for something different, but it's on the agenda, so let's move forward.
So, yes, thank you. So what we did realize is that there was a resolution accompanying this that would authorize the Behavioral Health Director to sign that. However, we would prefer to move forward with the presentation today and then bring the resolution back as a consent agenda item, observing that the board has already reviewed the plan.
Let's go.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just give some preface here. Annually, I believe your board is aware that Behavioral Health is tasked with updating our Mental Health Services Act, which through the proposition of Prop 1 will soon become the Behavioral Health Services Act, and lots more to come about that. So we are happy to present. Are you able to go full, right here? The little guy right there? Perfect. All right, next slide, please. Our 25, 2425 update. So this is just going to provide some background on the MHSA. I know the board is quite familiar with it, but of course, for any members of the public who aren't, happy to provide that context. So MHSA is a voter initiative passed in 2004, which allocates a millionaire's tax, so a tax on the wealthiest Californians, to fund non-traditional services and supports for mental health beneficiaries. We are required to go through a robust stakeholder and planning process every three years and then annually to provide updates. We do contract with a firm called Resource Development Associates, which helps us put all of this together, and it's really good because the MHSA has so much money that you, it's really good to have a third party to come in and ensure neutrality around spending and ensure that we respect the stakeholder process. So to quickly summarize the buckets of funding that are associated with the MHSA, we have a community services and supports, which comprises the largest bucket of funding. So this is direct services for all of our mental health beneficiaries. This includes things like our full-service partnership. On average, I want to say we pay like $20,000 to $30,000 worth of rents a month out of our full-service partnership program. So that's also including transitional stays and hotels. That's also including, of course, we love to move people into permanent housing, so we pay a portion of their housing to ensure stability, but the FSP motto is whatever it takes. So that's what we do. Prevention and early intervention, this is a bucket of funding that is exactly what it sounds. So this funds like staff to go into schools. We do a lot of mental health first aid trainings in the community through this funding bucket. It's also on the chopping block with Prop 1 there, and we can talk a lot more about that in the future, but- Oh, it is? Okay, great. And then innovation, so that's another one that's on the chopping block. It's a smaller bucket, but we've been able to lift programs such as analysis and evaluation of our full-service partnership program to ensure standardized programming across counties. Workforce education and training is another one that's, that's big for us in this. We have a really actually robust pipeline of workforce development, I'm proud to say. We actually have a few staff who were clients and are now in positions with Behavioral Health, and I would really like to credit the WET with some of that work. We also have capital facilities and technology, so this is just supporting infrastructure needs, of which there are many for Behavioral Health. Next slide, please. Okay, so the annual update is just to look at where have we gone? Where are we going? What's been done? What is still needed? And again, it's based on stakeholder input. This takes place through community meetings, through surveys, and other methodologies. And there is, I'm sure many of you, if not all of you, have attended MHSA stakeholder meetings, so you're probably familiar with what those look like and how the feedback process goes. Next slide, please. Okay, so the MHSOAC, which is the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, which oversees or is tasked by the Department of Healthcare Services with monitoring MHSA services for counties, updated their prevention and their PEI reporting requirements, so to make them more robust. So now we're required to report consumer served, demographic information, and just, you know, tighten up. And across the board, that's what you see, again, with Prop 1, which we'll talk about more, is just a tightening up of reporting requirements, which is fine. It's all good. And I think that's all we want to say about PEI. So we're really looking at that, that outcome data, right? What is, go ahead, Scott.
It's just a special report that they now require for, for us to have, and so it's, it's included within the overall plan.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next slide, please. Okay, of course, you can access this and all of the materials on our website. Next slide. Now, what about Prop 1? Man, so it's a, it's a modernization of the Mental Health Services Act. So again, the biggest change is retitling. What does that retitling mean? It means that people who are beneficiaries of substance use disorder treatment services are now eligible for things like full-service partnership, which is incredible because, as you might imagine, not having a permanent or sustainable or any kind of housing is definitely a barrier to treatment progress. And so this allows a lot more services across both sides of the house, quote unquote. And it was passed on the ballots on March 5th. All right. So there is also a bond with that that's coming out in the form of a Behavioral Health Continuum and infrastructure grants. We're definitely looking to apply for some of those bond measure grants to invest in, in infrastructure here in Lake County, and there's some ideas that I hope will be able to come to fruition here and we can bring before your board. So $2 billion of that is earmarked for just permanent supportive housing, similar to the Collier Avenue project. So there's a lot of opportunity here to even build brand-new facilities, which is certainly our preference. We'd love to see, I think Lake County deserves beautiful, nice, brand-new facilities, so that's a goal that I have personally. It, let's see, we talked about it, includes substance use disorder services. There is, and I don't know if it's on this, is there any talk about the exemption in the next slide? Yeah, so let's go ahead and, there's different accountability measures. So overall, they really want to see, again, more accountability to the dollars spent, which is fine. We're all for that. So expect to see more detailed outcome measures and other types of accountability measures in next iterations of our planning process as we comply with Prop 1. Okay, so this is a really key slide here that talks about how the funding allocations are going to change. So currently, 95 of the total revenue goes towards, 95% goes towards counties, and 5% is reserved for state kinds of initiatives. Of the 95% that's allocated to counties, CSS takes up 76%, as we discussed, and PEI and innovation take up about a quarter of that pie, as you can see. So, yes.
Of the 76%, half of that has to be spent on full-service partnerships. And of the 19% that you see there for the prevention, early intervention, early intervention, half of that has to be spent on youth.
Thank you for that. So the proposal is to reduce the county allocation of MHSA by 5%, and so they're looking at reallocating more of the workforce stuff and funding towards the state for state control, which is an interesting proposition. I'll reserve commented this time, but of the 90% that's now allocated to counties, you can see there's a significant redistribution of those funding buckets. So Behavioral Health Services and Supports is its own unique category, and I think that's mainly geared towards housing. And then you have full-service partnerships, which take up a lot, but absent here, you can see that there's no more PEI and there's no more innovation. So some of our, actually, all of our peer support centers are funded through blended MHSA funding buckets that include CSS, but also include PEI. So in absence of that PEI funding, counties are going to have to figure out, how am I going to fund these projects that had historically relied on that? So presently, we have our four peer support centers that rely on that, and so we'll have to figure out as a county if, if we're unable to be granted an exemption, which we do plan to apply for, and I'll talk about that, how we're going to continue to sustain those in the absence of that PEI funding. This is the implementation timeline. There is, as I referenced, the key here is in bold, so small rural counties are able to make an exemption from the 30% housing allocation, and it's our intention to do that. And we'll definitely be talking more about that. I anticipate that the exemption process will involve county board approval. That's my guess. It'll probably be a resolution that approves the exemption for the county, and so-
We'll also be taking it to the stakeholders of the community to make sure that they're in agreement.
But just, you know, in preparation, gearing up for those conversations, there's already a lot of funding streams that are coming in for housing, and it's kind of a funky situation in Lake County because we actually have a lot, we actually have HUD Section 8 vouchers that go unutilized because of a lack of housing stock. And so it's a lot of press pressure on counties to provide housing supports, and in Lake County, we don't have enough housing for our people, so we're like, it's, it's a tough position to be in, and that's one of the rationales for pursuing an exemption. All right, next slide. This is just a resource to you all, and I'm happy to share this, even though it wasn't presented on the agenda. I'll probably email this out just for information, so you have links to everything if you didn't already, but just some helpful resources to learn more about Prop 1. Now, getting back into our outcome data. Maybe. That's okay. There's ghosts in the machine. All right, so this is a, this is a summary of all of the programs that this funding supports and supported in 2324, so a variety, all of these I think your board is familiar with. We've had these programs in place for quite a long time, so no significant changes year to year here.
Yeah, and that's probably kind of an overall thing, you know, talking about, quit laughing at me. The overall plan, just let you, let you all know, because these changes are happening with Proposition 1, we don't want to really implement anything that's going to be majorly changing because we don't know if the funding is going to be there, you know, down in a year or two. And so the idea is we're, we don't want to make a whole lot of changes. We want to kind of keep things steady until we know more about the exemption and what's going to be, if we're going to qualify for that, and so we're trying to just be conservative. So this update, this is year two of a three-year plan, is, is pretty conservative as far as, far as changes. And so these are essentially what the programs that we have right now, and we're not looking at doing hardly any modification to that.
Thank you for that. We are, as Mr. Abbott said, being very conservative because there are so many moving parts right now that we want to see how the dust settles. All right, next slide, please. This is demographic information about our ethnicities as they relate to receiving services. So it tells you about ages, ethnicities, and gender of the folks who receive both community services and supports programs and PEI programs. The majority were adults who were white, and that kind of matches our population. We, of course, always like to see higher penetration rates, is what they call it, in other non-white ethnicities, so our BIPOC population, we continue to focus on outreach. And so that's, that's just demographic information, just for clarification. All right, next slide, please. This is some of my favorite data, getting into the FSP data, because this is where we have the most robust outcome reporting, and you can really see the investment of dollars and the result in people's lives. And so this is talking about the reductions in mental health emergencies and reductions in psychiatric facility hospital stays. And so it's looking at a year before they were at FSP, at year one, and then year two, and you can see a dramatic reduction in mental health crises and hospitalizations. And so while FSP is a pretty expensive program, these are extremely expensive, not only from a fiscal perspective, but from a quality of living and dignity perspective as well. So we're really able to keep people out of crisis through the full-service partnership program.
Something else we don't have on there that I wish we did is, is we also have a reduction in-
Incarceration.
Incarceration, yeah.
Yes, we do. We see definitely a reduction in recidivism and incarceration, and hopefully soon, that's unfortunate, but we do, we do. It's great. All right, next slide, please. Okay, this is one of my favorite programs, our street outreach van. Hopefully, you've all seen our van. So that's Mr. Abels, David Abels. He is out and about. He is engaging primarily with our unhoused population and going to where they're at in encampments. We can all appreciate the limited mobility that some people have when they're unhoused. And so we are offering food, you know, prepackaged foods and whatnot to people in the encampments, hygiene products, also food for their animals, bus passes, Narcan or naloxone, of course, and then, of course, looking at the numbers served. So we have the highest percentage of people in Clear Lake, which makes sense. That's our population center, and also where we see a lot of need. It's a heat point in our county. Following up, we have then Lakeport. Lucerne sees a lot of action from the van. Yeah, so he, we're out there, and it's, it's really great. I'm really happy about it, and it's continuing. Is there any data for Cobb area? There isn't any data. Are we going to Cobb?
Not sure.
Well, we'd be happy to integrate this, and I, actually, I know for sure that we did during the disaster.
During the storm.
The storm, yes.
Pretty much go to identified homeless encampments around the county, and so if there's, there's someone Cobb, then that's, then we're going there.
Yeah, and if you know of something that we don't, please, please let us know, because it's totally driven, it's by community feedback, where we got our ears to the ground to know where to find people. Absolutely.
And I'm hopeful that the data is just inside some of those other categories, but not specifically detailing Cobb area or something along those lines. Like, I hope that data is still within the numbers that you're showing us.
Hmm, I don't know.
Yeah, next time I'll put the, where the encampments are located, that might be better information than municipalities there.
It could be. We'll have to think about how to conceptualize that. I almost had like a map come up in my head, but I have concerns about that.
Or zip code breakdown, maybe that-
Oh, that, that could be nice. Okay, yeah, so we have some good ideas. Never, needless to say, they're out and about in our community. It is not every single day of the week, but it's Wednesdays and Thursdays that they're out doing their outreach, and it's primarily Davey, but I think he does switch off. All right, next slide, please.
I have a quick question-
Yes, please.
About the numbers on the previous slide.
Sure. Were you able to go back?
So can you explain the percentages on the left? Does that mean 100% of the people that are engaging with the street outreach are getting meals, and only 1% are getting bus passes? Like, it doesn't add up, like, my math is misunderstanding what I'm looking at and what the numbers add up to, what they mean?
I believe what that means is, 100% of the people that they encounter, they do give a, some type of meal, a sandwich, and then 1% of the people they encounter, they'll give a bus pass.
And what does the percentages afterwards on the referrals mean? Because those don't add up to 100% either, since peer support is 99%?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? Which one?
The, so meal, 100%, mental health services, 17%. What are the percentages? Is it the, again, the use of that referral?
I think what this means is that of the 2,100 roughly people, 100 of the, all of them received some type of food. Of those, only 17%-
Gotcha.
So it's of the total population for each category.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
And it's just separated by services as one thing, and then referrals as a different category, but the numbers represents the percentage of the 2,100, okay?
Of the total, yeah.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Okay, outreach and engagement. Hopefully, you have been able to see us out at community events. We're really trying to have a strong presence and really always build our presence in the community, so we've been able to touch around 1,000, a little over 1,000 people through all of our various tabling, you know, where any event, like if you know of an event and we're not there, hopefully, that's not the case. We want to be at every event. So, for example, farmer's markets were there, school campus lunchtime events, we, the Veterans Stand Down, Celebrate Recovery are just some examples of the events that we're tabling at. And of course, our Mental Health Matters Month is, is our show, so.
Also, the concerts in the park at Lakeport.
Oh, yes, that's been a fun addition, actually. The concerts and, the Friday night concerts in Lakeport. This is our second year tabling at that, which is kind of a different event, but it's actually, it's really cool because a lot of the community comes out, and so we get to spread awareness to a segment of the community that might never have known about our services. So that's been really fun, and fun for staff, too. All right. This is our question persuade, and I thought it was respond or refer, but I guess it's respond. So we are targeting high school students with life-saving skills to interact with their peers if their peer is experiencing thoughts of hurting themselves or attempting suicide. So we do pre and post surveys about a variety of opinions or perceptions or skills on engaging with somebody who's experiencing suicidal ideation. And so you can see that people feel much more confident that they know the warning signs of suicide, that they know how to ask if somebody's thinking about suicide from pre to post. So this is really building skills for our youth to be able to recognize those signs and symptoms and intervene enough to keep that person safe in the moment. So that's a really fun show, so, yeah. All right, we do have some, these are our key findings. I believe this is more qualitative data. It's bold, oh.
Yeah, I think it is more qualitative.
Yeah, so this is our quantitative part. So this is a timeline of how we got here to where we are. So community survey, which is via Survey Monkey, I believe, we had two community meetings for a total of 218 people who contributed information to this update and gave feedback about how we're doing as a plan administering the MHSA. So the largest bucket of people were behavioral health service providers, which is fine. I consider those expert stakeholders, but we had a lot of other stakeholders, a lot of family members, 20%, so that's really great to see. That's who we'd love to hear from, as well as consumers, and then a lot of folks who just chose not to be identified. So a pretty good mishmash of folks from the community to provide feedback. Oh, next slide, please. So this is where it gets into the qualitative section, and this is extremely valuable information for us. We've actually talked about this significantly in our management meetings and presented to our staff, but a lot of participants that responded did not feel that we're meeting the needs of the community. Now, it's important to note that this survey came out prior to the real hard launch of mobile crisis.
And, and the change in access.
Yes, and we made significant changes in our access process, recognizing that it wasn't as functional as it could have been. So I'm really hoping that a year from now, when we do this again, we can look and say those two things really made a difference in people feeling like they're getting their needs met. Mobile crisis, as you're aware, has been a huge lift, and so it's, I'm grateful for that feedback. Half of the participants do feel that our peer support centers meet the needs of, of the community, which is great to hear. About half of the participants didn't feel like services are conveniently available and feel like it's difficult to get an appointment. That prompted us to completely reevaluate and redesign our access process to streamline, standardize, and make it the least difficult process possible. It's, you know, it's, it's never painless, or it's, you know, there's a lot to move through in terms of eligibility for services, but we're really working hard to make sure. Same-day appointments is my goal, right? So you come in, you're, and strike when the iron's hot. You're ready for services. We can capture you right there and in there. So that's what we're really striving towards, is those same-day appointments, even for psychiatry. Like, in my dreams, somebody comes into our clinic, they're like, I need help right now. We say, great, we swoop them up, take them back, assess them, and maybe even you can get an appointment with your psychiatrist that same week. And I think that we're-
Remarkable.
Yeah, I think we're going to be, we're heading there, and we're going to be able to get there. That's where we want to go. About half of the participants felt that our services are respectful of culture, but this was a little bit split. So as your board may be aware, cultural competence and humility is something that Behavioral Health as a discipline is always striving towards. We're never done. It's never an, it's just a continuing mission, or, excuse me, a continuing goal of improving client cultural sensitivity. Next slide. All right, so behavioral health providers were most likely to report a positive impression of our services. Consumers and family members were more likely to report a negative impression of our services, and other community members had a mixed response. So this is, this is fascinating, and this is something that we've talked about, not only in leadership, but also with other staff. Like, we may have a perception that we're doing a good job, but something's not adding up here because our beneficiaries are not feeling like it's always the greatest experience. So there's definitely a lot here to work on, and again, I hope with the changes to our access, our mobile crisis program, and other ways of doing things, that we're going to have better impressions from our community next time around. Next slide, please. So our strengths are the community recognize we have a wider variety of services available. We've been really working on, as your board can see, with all of our gigantic contracts, expanding services, momentum to embrace and implement new services, of course, mobile crisis being a highlight of that. Staff and leadership were noted as a strength of the department, and accessibility, consistency, and flexibility of services. There were obviously challenges. There will always be challenges, so staff shortages and retention, absolutely. We're well aware of the behavioral health workforce crisis that is impacting not only the state of California, but the nation, you know, and healthcare at large, and that's hard. Barriers to accessing services, that's something that we can do stuff about, and we have, as I've just discussed. Insufficient housing options, that's a tough one because a lot of that is outside of our control. We don't have control over the housing stock, so I can, I understand that challenge. There was also an expressed need for more peer support centers, more substance use services. Now, I'm happy to say, and I hope that in a year from now, a year from ODS, we're going to have better perceptions about availability of substance use disorder services, because certainly, pre-ODS, there were limitations, so now there aren't, and people that need it should be able to get it. So that's very exciting and feels good. Also, doing a little bit more work around including family and natural supports in people's care, that's always a great thing to do. Next slide. All right, so the following populations were identified as particularly needy and an area of focus, so older adults, our LGBTQ+ community, our unhoused population, and our justice-involved individuals. There's a number of initiatives that are impacting particularly our unhoused and our justice-involved individuals at present related to Cal AIM. And so we've actually been working very diligently with public health, the sheriff's custody side, and, and patrol side around better serving justice-involved individuals. Of course, the board is aware that we now co-locate a building in Lower Lake with probation, so we're really trying to wrap around our justice-involved population more effectively. So again, I'm always hopeful that next year, we can say, yeah, we really tried to make some moves around these populations. All right, next slide. Obviously, myriad opportunities, so reducing barriers to access, that's actively happening right now. Increasing community awareness of services, we are always trying to, it's kind of a real mystery to me in some ways, that I feel like we're present in the community, but we continue to need to be out there because not everybody still knows about our services, and that's super important, so we're going to continue to pound the pavement and, and be boots on the ground to tell people about our services, because if you don't know we exist, you can't get help. Supporting staff, so we're always definitely want to invest in our staff. Our staff are our greatest resource, and so making sure that our staff are well-trained and supported, and of course, as diverse of leadership as we can have, that's what we want to have. Improving collaboration and communication across providers and partners, that's definitely still an ongoing goal. I don't think that's ever going to cease to be a goal. I do personally see, you know, there's still a lot of silos within healthcare, and so it'd be, breaking down silos continues to be a theme for behavioral health and something we're very motivated to do. All right. So here's our proposed modifications and budget requests, which is pretty minimal, actually. So the ones, the items that are bolded, I believe, are being modified, and is there more information, I believe, on the following slide? Okay. So the program modification, so we're going to expand FSP programming, so we're going to add forensic, that means justice-involved, really, FSP team. My, one of my other goals is to have an assertive community treatment team sometime in the near future, which is a multidisciplinary team that wraps around people who are at risk of recidivism in the criminal justice system to really keep them out of that. And expanding, also, we want to expand our existing older adult team. We're going to integrate some programming and resources from our forensic mental health partnership and our older adult program. So really putting more resources into that justice-involved population is going to be a focus of the FSP. Next slide. Next slide. Okay, so this is our, what we got going on for our budget. High-level budget, just the buckets. Yeah, the details are on page 114 of the plan, if you want to dig into that. But of course, as you would expect, the largest amount of dollars is going towards CSS. And our total budget for the MHSA is about 7.6 million for fiscal year 24, 25. Questions?
Thank you very much for your presentation and all the work that you've done to expand the services. I too am very excited about what the new ODS system will provide. It was meant to expand, and let's see what that expansion looks like, because some of it's within our control and some of it is who's going to become our partners.
That is correct.
And so that, that's what we can look forward to, is that level of expansion. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Appreciate the presentation and all the hard work. These reports are not easy to pull together, I'm sure. More a comment than a question. I do see that the public hearing that was held June 6th was duly noticed, as put in the newspapers and what have you, but it was supposed to be a duly noticed public hearing before Behavioral Health Advisory Board. I don't see the standard agendas within our agenda center. I do see the Zoom invite from Mr. Abbott. I didn't see an agenda from the BHAB chair. And so I just want to highlight, there may be a procedural defect that before you bring the resolution back, you may want to talk with county council. If the requirement is that we conduct a duly noticed public hearing, I think we met that threshold. But if the requirement additionally says that it take place before the Behavioral Health Advisory Board in specific, I don't think we met that threshold. I think we can cure that defect rather easily by calling a special meeting before the resolution is prepared. So it's a follow-up item. Don't need to hang anyone up today, but it is a question I'm going to be following up with you and county council on.
Thank you for lifting that up.
Thank you very much for your comment. Any further comments or questions? I just have one question, and I don't know that you can respond because I didn't ask you that question in advance, so it's kind of on the spot. But I know here, one of the signature pages says, "I hereby certify that for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, the county slash city has maintained an interest-bearing local mental health services fund." Are we seeing an interest going back into that fund? Okay, because I, I haven't been able to capture that and see it in real time when we talk about like our, we don't have much of a breakdown when it comes to our investment policy to show us where things are going back in. And when reviewing the budget, it kind of looks like it's somewhat flatlined, but maybe it's because we're pulling money out and interest is going back in. And so I'm not seeing those changes. But if you say yes, that's the answer I'm looking for.
It's, I, I think it might be within the budget, if not in the budget, it's in our, it's for sure in our annual revenue and expenditure report for MHSA, which is on our, our website as well.
Okay, I appreciate the response. Thank you for having one. That's the only comment that I have, other than thank you very much for all the good work you're doing. Difficult task, lots of unfortunately, issues that we have to try to provide services to help people get back on their feet and go, get into a, a better, more stable environment. Never going to be easy work, but appreciate the, the work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you.
Let's open it up for comment from the public. I see nothing in the Zoom room and no one getting up in the chambers. Thank you again, and we will see you when the resolution comes back.
Thank you.